Okay, it's Monday, January the ninth, two thousand twenty-three, better known as the College Football Championship now. Six thirty, so with that we will get going. Everybody please rise and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, Mr. James Strickler, you have signed up to speak, so you are welcome to do so. Yes, sir. Yes, sir, right here at the. And then you just need to state your name and your address, please.
Uh, James Strickler, fourteen hundred West Ninth Street, McGregor. And my reason for being here tonight is kind of upset with SpaceX. About a year ago, I noticed my underpinning being cracked and damaged. And so I got a number to call. And lady was very nice, and she actually arranged for an inspector to come do the evaluation. And that happened maybe a couple of weeks later, probably back in January, February. And then he submitted the report back to SpaceX. And maybe within three or four weeks, I heard back from SpaceX, and they said that there's going to be a delay in the process. And so that same number that I called, they don't even answer the phone any longer. And they don't. I don't think they want to give out too many numbers because they don't want to hear complaints. But anyway, so it's been probably about going on ten months since I've even heard anything. And then I heard something from some other people. And they said that SpaceX wasn't responsible for any damage. So I wanted to see what you have to say since it's city property.
Well, so the fact that you haven't heard something to the council would be unacceptable to us, plain and simple. Right? You should have an answer by now. I don't know what all is going on. I have been in touch personally with other people who've had complaints. And my complaint with SpaceX, and they know this, and I don't mind saying it on the mic, is that they have not contacted. You now make several people about some of these interviews, investigations that they've done and not provided information.
Yes.
Mr. Strickler, legally SpaceX is immune from suit. We didn't make that rule. The state of Texas made that rule. They have immunity from liability per the state of Texas.
Yeah, that's a shame.
Yeah, so therefore that kind of changes the whole ballgame. When any person or any entity knows that you can't be sued, then you handle things differently. So what SpaceX position is, they're essentially doing this out of favor, as courtesy to people. And I think if they could find that there are, because we know of some that they have actually given some compensation to, you know, if they can, if it can be proved. And then again, I don't know exactly what your situation is. We don't have near time for tonight to go into all this situation. But my goal would be to get you an answer from them regardless.
That would be nice. I mean, I even called the inspector back, but he said that that wasn't his. He said his job was just doing the inspection.
So is it Corville? Is it somebody with Corville who you've talked to?
I think they were out of Dallas.
That's a company that's a third-party adjuster who's been out looking at things.
Well, could you take my name down to look into that?
Yeah, I've got it. That's why I asked.
Well, thank you.
I'll see to it that you get an answer.
Oh, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, with that, we will light into the agenda for the evening. And that is the consent agenda. Item one A, consider approving minutes of council meeting held on December twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. Those minutes are attached in the packet. Anybody have any changes or comments to those meetings? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from December twelfth.
There's a motion on the second. Under item one A. Anything else? All those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. Item two is discussion of possible action regarding appointment of an emergency management coordinator for the city of McGregor for annual submission to the Texas Division of Emergency Management.
Van, how long have you been our E O C?
About four years.
It feels like that's how long I've been mayor.
I think the first mayor that I served under was Buck Morris.
Do you still want to do it?
Yes, sir.
That's my recommendation.
Yeah, I think that's a no-brainer. Yeah, so if anybody else agrees, would you please make the motion to specifically appoint Van?
I make, I make a motion to appoint Van Smith as the emergency management coordinator for the city of McGregor.
One second. There's a motion of second under item two. As stated, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. As always, Van, we really appreciate it. Thank you very much for that volunteer service that you provide to us. Item three is to hold a public hearing regarding revised preliminary plat of the Parks Residential Development Phase Two for Coyote Canyon General Contracting LLC, April two thousand twenty-two. Brian, good evening.
How are you?
Good. What do we got here?
This is an updated preliminary plan for the Parks Phase Two. Essentially, what they've done is take out the multifamily that was in that top right-hand corner. So it's all coming back, single-family residential now.
So this goes back, we had a meeting, full house.
April.
Several months ago, right? Do you have knowledge of that, sir?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I thought. Yeah, okay. It's good to have you here.
I'm trying to answer any questions. I'm trying to.
Okay, all right, great. So do you have any questions of us, any comments about anything? I mean, since you're the owner, it's kind of a big deal.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I will say, I remember that night, and I appreciate you accommodating all those citizens out there and sticking to what they all believed was the deal, and I think McGregor supports you and go forward. Brian, anything else we need to see on this?
No, that's, it's really just revisiting April minus the multifamily, so it's the same footprint, same utility.
And Kevin, utilities, we pretty well ready to go out there for that?
Oh, yeah, they'll do what they always do, and your folks will review it, but it's not hard. Just expensive. The, how many lots is in this total?
I forget the number off the top of my head. Is it two?
First phase or the whole thing?
Phase two.
This here?
There's the north of forty-five.
In phase one, in the phase two, the first phase of this grouping?
Yeah, it's phase two, section one, I guess.
Oh, okay, so he's saying phase one of what you see up there, not phase one, what we know as phase one.
So phase one of this, Parks Phase Two?
Yeah.
Yeah. So exactly, can you kind of point out where that will begin then?
Right here and then up.
Okay.
Call the sack, force double over on both sides, and then up and ties into eighty-four. So then we, the one text card right now is the middle turn lane and a decelerating eighty-four.
Okay.
For the decelerating, and then the middle turn lane is pretty much identical.
All right. So the public hearing is open, and it is six forty-two. Anybody from the public want to comment on this revised preliminary plat as discussed and shown on the screen? Yes, ma'am. Yeah, you can just state your name there at the microphone.
Thank you. My name is Sharon Watson. I live at nine oh one Dublin Court. I just would like to know what this means. Right here.
That road connects in.
Okay, is it, is it a, just a straight road? Is there, did it cross that little?
Yeah, it would be a lot of box culverts in there for the drainage, the one across the road.
But this, this drainage that's along here stays.
That's correct.
Is it, is correct?
That's correct.
All right, thank you so much.
Yep.
Yeah, you're welcome. Anything else, ma'am? Anybody? With that, the public hearing is closed at six forty-four. It takes us to item four, which is discussion of possible action regarding revised preliminary plat of the Parks Residential Development Phase Two for Coyote Canyon General Contracting LLC dated April two thousand twenty-two. Anything else, Brian, we need to know on this? Sir, anything?
We should have engineering for, like more detailed engineering for the next round here pretty quickly, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
What are you looking at for your final? Just curious.
It wants to be the engineering approved, depending on the schedule, I guess, there. We want to start the infrastructure this, for two thousand twenty-three, obviously, but we're trying to put houses on the ground, key one, key two, twenty-four. I'm not sure. It depends on what the economy is going to do, I guess, what interest rates apply. We'd like at least to get the lots on the ground.
We've got industry coming.
Okay, is there a motion on item four under the revised preliminary plat? There's a motion of second under item four. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. Thank you, sir. To item five, which is to hold a public hearing regarding final replat for lot nine, block eight of the J H Hall addition for Avelas Construction, tentatively addressed one hundred and one oh two North Jackson, November two thousand twenty-two. All right, Brian, what do we got here, item five and six?
So we're all, we're, Avelas doing a lot of rebuilding on McGregor. Right here is eight hundred block of Second Street. This is right behind it. This is the old rail bed. So when you go over Jackson, it's this open field that's right here. Essentially, he's taken this field and split it right down the middle here. And gonna try to build two houses right there. The water for him will come across the street, but in your packet, you should have received a quote that he had. He's gonna have to run a sewer line down to the intersection of North Second and Jackson.
So just curious, getting my bearings straight, what is the building there that's just, I guess, north?
This is under, this was, a photo was taken under construction, so this is, these are all three finished houses right here. So this is what they had it all framed up before they put the roof on it.
So that's the intersection roughly? That's North Second, you say?
Yeah, this is North Second, goes up here, and this is Jackson right here. So the intersection would be right here where he needs to tie into that sewer.
And I know this is a final, so we've seen this before, is that correct?
That's what I'm told, yes, sir.
Yeah, Kevin, does that sound familiar?
Yes, sir. Ready to go.
Okay. Are there any questions about five? If not, is there a motion under item five? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you. Public hearing. It's six forty-seven. The public hearing is open under item five. Anybody from the public here to comment on the final replat? Hearing nothing from the public, now that takes us to item six, which is an action item, discussion of possible action regarding final replat for lot nine, block eight of the J H Hall addition for Avelas Construction, tentatively addressed one hundred and one oh two North Jackson, November two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion under item six?
Except the final replat for lot nine, block eight of the J H Hall addition.
Yeah, that's it. There's a motion of second under item six. Any questions or comments?
You seem like very long.
They're narrow but long, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to get my bearings. Like the mayor said, I was like, what are we looking at here?
But I'm assuming when we're talking about final replats, and we're a long way down the process, if someone's done the measurements, know what's going to be put there, and it works, setbacks, all that kind of stuff.
We haven't seen anything construction-wise, but this is just for the plating.
Yeah.
I was just making a point.
Yeah, you're right. It would, it would look, it would be better if it was, lot was cut the other direction.
When you look at that, these look like new homes.
Yeah, those are new homes there that are on Second Street, right there. Other, I, I hear what the council is saying as far as like the, making it more square, but they don't have access because these are all private, and this is all private, and this is a.
Yeah, I get that.
So that's the only way into that property.
Stuck.
Yeah.
Yeah, unless you were not replating, use the line.
Got to do what you got to do. Thank you.
Sixty-foot lots, that direction, I guess you put something there. That's what it shows.
Yeah, sixty foot, roughly.
All right, there's a motion to second. Somebody second? Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries to item seven. Hold public hearing regarding final plat for construction of duplex at two oh three Hayes Street for Tulasi Enterprises, December two thousand twenty-two.
This is, this is just duplex. We visited this one just a month or two ago. Same floor plan, same essential design as these two right here, and gonna go on this lot. The P and Z did grant him a slight variance on the setback for the side yard because the right-of-way is so wide, but no, no changes or anything since we met last.
And this is the one where essentially we said from here, we're putting the brakes on.
Yeah, that's, that's what we vocalized to him.
Yeah.
Which way is it, is it gonna be facing the house?
Uh, the front, the front of the house will be right here with, right here, same, same facing, mm-hmm.
Okay, this is the final plat tonight, so under item seven, it is six fifty-two. Public hearing is open for anybody that wants to comment on item seven. Anything from the public? With that, the public hearing is closed. Same time goes to item eight, discussion of possible action regarding final plat for construction of duplex at two oh three Hayes Street for Tulasi Enterprises LLC, December two thousand twenty-two. Anything to add, Brian?
Uh, he did file for the infield program. So certain specifications that he'll have to meet in order for that to happen, but nothing, nothing out of the ordinary.
What, does he get a break on some permits?
Mm-hmm.
Permit fees?
Yeah.
And with that, he abides by a certain construction standards?
Certain percentage of stonework and different materials, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion on eight?
I make a motion to approve the final plat for construction at duplex at two oh three Hayes.
Second.
There's a motion of second on item eight. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. To item nine, discussion of possible action, discussion and consider action under temporary moratorium on specific use permits for duplex development in single-family residential areas until such time as the Planning and Zoning Commission can study and make recommendation on said further development.
As we just discussed, it's a good time for this plating to be approved ahead of this. That was the one that kind of triggered the conversation. P and Z will need to look at an ordinance and study it and make their recommendation to you. That ordinance has been prepared by Charlie and Brian to try to address specifically what you were talking about. This moratorium allows us to go until that time and not have somebody walk in the front door and drop a bunch of permit applications on our table and pay a lot of money that they may not get anything from. We could tell them your posture currently, but they could still push forward, and that's just unnecessary. Moratoriums are done all the time to look at and study issues, and so that's where we're at with this.
All right, everybody recalls when and why we did that. Kevin's explained it accurately. Anybody have any questions? I think we were all unanimous agreeing about what we wanted to do and why, so. With that, is there a motion on nine, and then we go open it for any further discussion? No motion, please, yes.
I move that we have a temporary moratorium on specific use permit for duplex development in single-family residential area.
Second. There's a motion of second under item nine. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, no. That motion carries. To item ten, receive financials as of November thirtieth, twenty twenty. Thanks, Brian.
Mayor, council, November is sixteen point six seven percent of our fiscal year. All of our revenues, with the exception of the event center, are above that, and all of our expenditures are well below. The net cash in bank is twenty-six million more than the same period last year. Our operating accounts are up a total of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Full cash is up two point three million, and grants are up six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, while capital projects and debt service accounts decreased a hundred and sixty-three three and four hundred and one thousand respectively. General fund net cash flows is a hundred and four thousand higher than the previous year. Revenue is up three hundred and twenty-seven, and expenditures are up two hundred and twenty-three. The revenue increase is mainly due to construction permits. Three hundred and thirty-four thousand, and expenditures include a hundred and twenty-five thousand in capital outlay that we did not have by this time last year, and personnel costs are up forty-two point nine. The exchange net cash flows are down three hundred and eighty-three dollars as compared to the same period last year. Revenues are up six point seven, and expenses are up six point three. Self-serve alcohol fee is up a thousand six. Wedding rental is up two thousand four, and party rental is up two point three. Our contracted services and the expenditure side are up five point eight, and personnel costs are up four point one. The municipal airport net cash flows are down eight thousand as compared to the same period, and revenues are down four point eight, and expenses are up three point two. There's just the breakdown of the cash accounts. The next one is, page is our revenues and expenditures that you can see for each year and how they. And then the next slide is just what I was telling you verbally, is that where the operating accounts are up, and overall difference of two point five million. The next one is pretty exciting. If you look, well, at least to an accountant, they're exciting. Your sales tax is at three nine. Your sales tax is at three ninety-eight for the first two months out of the calendar year, that's pretty good. Best it's ever been.
Crazy, almost the sales tax.
It's amazing. I can remember when it was sixty-five thousand in a month, and the last month was over two hundred thousand. Yeah.
Carolyn and I talked about this today, and there's a way. I was just telling Paul a minute ago, in the old days, this will age me a lot, they used to send you a quarterly report, green sheets. Remember those old green bar wide sheets? Printout of every single dollar from every single.
Business.
Business. And then all of a sudden, you can't do that anymore because it's discoverable, and competitors were going and getting copies of it and that kind of stuff. So now you have to go through a bit of a process to find out specifically what's going on. And we're gonna do that just to make sure we know, so that we don't overestimate the future.
Yeah.
So forth, so. It is good news, and we love it and believe it, but we're, what's the old term, trust but verify?
Yes.
We're gonna go verify some.
Yeah, because they happened to me one time, and then I had to pay them back.
Yes. Luckily, I was on the other side. I got paid because we shared a zip code, and everything was, the state was defaulting to the other city.
Geez.
We, because we couldn't figure out why, because we went from business to business to make sure it had our city's name on their sales tax permit, and it did. So I kept going, well, why are they not showing up on my report? We finally got, I finally got somebody at the state that worked really well with me, and they went downstairs and checked it out, and soon as the girls typed in the zip code, the other city's name popped in.
So we are essentially twice what we've ever done, almost.
For the same period.
Yeah, right.
We're not gonna talk about that yet, Carolyn.
I know.
We'll talk about that next month or maybe month after.
Okay, Carolyn, anything else?
No, sir. Everything's going good.
Okay, appreciate it. Kevin?
You didn't have an executive session this time. You definitely will next time. You may need to have a special meeting between the two. I doubt it. I think we'll be able to deal with it otherwise, but you're gonna have some interesting news coming up pretty soon. Things are looking real good. You heard the timeframe that Parks is looking at. Well, he's not sure what the economy's gonna do, but our economy's gonna do real well. Good Lord willing, and the creek don't rise, we'll have some good things to talk about next week. I'd like to get, you know, you know that that saying has nothing to do with water.
I wish it did.
But that saying's actually about the Creek Indians. But that's another story.
Well, that's probably not gonna happen.
I don't think the Indians are gonna rise, but I sure would like to get some rain.
Yeah. Kevin, what else?
That's it.
Uh, requests, comments from the mayor and council. Kevin, I'm gonna follow up with the gentleman asked about tonight, the conversation you and I had with SpaceX and Alma a couple of weeks ago. Will you find out where they are?
Already done a note with Alma, in fact, I started the text earlier, I'll, I'll let her have that off.
Yeah, yeah, right.
I'll get it first thing in the morning.
Yeah, that'd be good. But find out what the status is, when are they gonna start notifying people, what are they doing?
When you send folks out to somebody's houses, you create an expectation.
Really good. It's just.
Even if you, even if you disappoint, you have to.
Yep. Silence is not acceptable.
I do have one thing to add. I apologize. Today was Casey, what's her last name?
Burke's.
Burke's first day as the new chamber exec. And we're looking for some good things from her. She's gonna be pretty good, I think. Get a chance, go around and meet her.
She'll be office and primarily.
Sad thing is, she has to office next to Andrew, but she'll be able to go.
She'll be fine.
Council, anything else we got here tonight?
I'd like to say, we got a chance to go to the country, or the McGregor Christmas. What are we calling this? Country Christmas, right? Okay.
It's gonna be, it's gonna switch from McGregor Country Christmas next year to Texas Country Christmas.
Texas Country Christmas. I, I guess, we went the first night, Wednesday night.
Yeah.
And I enjoyed it. We really, that was really a good time, and I heard a lot of really good comments from people that came. Unfortunately, the weather didn't cooperate. That was pretty brutal. Especially what Thursday and Friday.
Next year, it'll be eighty.
Could be, but I, I thought that was well done, and I enjoyed it.
Yeah, so those that know a little more about the behind-the-scenes, I agree exactly with what Stephen said, what I saw and what I heard from my crew of people that I see and hear from, from Waco, well, they were really impressed with, with their visit through McGregor that evening.
I don't get many comments. I got a bunch.
Yeah.
One other reminder, Waco Chamber celebration, their banquet the twenty-fourth. If you haven't told me, please tell me soon, so I can get those names into them. They like to have all that. And right now, we have a table. Did I get two? I think I got one, and we can get another, we need to, but just let me know. And I'll send out another for nine hundred.
Okay. Anything else? We stand adjourned, seven oh five.